The Town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's town council meeting. Tonight is Monday, June 7, 2021, and it is 7:00 PM. I would ask that you please stand for the pledge, and I will ask Councilman Underwood to lead us.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's nice to be back in our pre-COVID arrangement here, so I think we're all getting more comfortable and the way we're going to start doing our business of the town. So it's nice to see everybody where we're supposed to be. All right, we don't have, we have a presentation, but I think the Girl Scouts are going to be here in a little bit of time, so we're going to continue on with our agenda, and once the Girl Scouts arrive, we will break for that and do a little bit of presentation for them, all right?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to add a new item to new business as number four, and then move the tax refunds to number five, and the number four will be a resolution regarding Affordable Housing Plan Technical Assistance Grant.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for that. Moving along, we do not have a public hearing, so I will ask for approval of the minutes of our previous meeting.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
A motion to approve the minutes of May 17, 2021, at regular meeting.
Madam Chair, second I motion.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Item number four, announcements and reports. Does anybody have any announcements or reports to make tonight? Rosemary, this is not your week?
No, no, next meeting, next meeting.
Okay. You usually have a wealth of information to share, so. Anybody else?
Yes, the Plainville Cemetery Association will be opening their first. Their first pet cemetery on Saturday. We will be one of five in the state, and I'm hearing an awful lot of good things about it from the public.
And what time is that again?
It'll be from 9:00 to 12:00.
9:00 to 12:00, okay, great. Thank you. Anybody else have anything to add? I'd just like to report a couple of things regarding the schools. Last Friday, I was invited to participate in a ribbon cutting at Tofflon School. They unveiled an outdoor learning space for the students. It's really very, very nicely done. It's like a stadium sitting, but it's outdoors. If children and the teachers would like to do a lesson outside, it's a beautiful place to do that. They have great plans for doing some outdoor concerts there as well and presentations, so it was a fun event. The folks mostly involved in creating this outdoor space, which were pretty much all donated, were the Carrier Corporation, Telcon participated in it, Washington Concrete, and Forestville Lumber. So these are our local businesses that are very skilled in building trades and in providing materials for building, things of that nature, and it was a very nice ribbon cutting. And as we all know, this is Lynn Legoyd, who has been the principal at Tofflon School forever, as far as I can remember, is retiring in June. And this is really a testament to her as well. She had, that was one big wish, if she could ever get something for her school, she wished she could have such an outdoor space. And through the efforts of the carriers and the other local corporations and businesses, they were able to put it together. It was designed, everything was taken care of. In addition to that, I believe the Rotary also donated some plantings and to finish off the landscaping, so everybody that could chipped in. And it is really a wonderful space for them, for their future outdoor learning activities. And they are using a lot of outdoor activity now after having been inside for so very long over the past year. So it's a timely event, and it was, it was nice to see that. So I did want to let you know about that. Also, this Thursday is the graduation of Plainville High School. I think it will go back to what it used to be before. Last year was a very unique and special ceremony. Due to COVID, things were different. The students and families stayed in their cars and drove up and got their diplomas. But I believe now this year it's going to be outdoors, and it'll be a fun event. And with all hope, the weather will cooperate, so we're looking forward to that as well. That would be this, this Thursday. So that's all I have to report on, and if there are no other reports tonight, we'll move on to appointments and resignations. We have one appointment tonight.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
A motion to appoint Roberta Lauria, 18 Perron Road, to the library trustees for the term ending November 7, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So Rosemary just let me know that this Thursday is the library trustees.
Tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow. I'm sorry. Take that back. Walk it back. Can we let Mrs. Lauria know about that? I'm not, I don't know if she knows what the schedules are of that, but and then you're on, they're on break for the summer, right?
Correct. They won't meet again until September.
Okay. Well, that would be her first meeting if she could make it, so I appreciate that. Are there any other appointments or reappointments tonight to boards and commissions? None? Okay. Onward we go. Board of Education is the third meeting. Report of the town attorney.
Good evening.
Okay, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
All right. All right, Mr. Lee, we're in five minutes in, and we're already down to you, so take it away.
I don't know if that's good or bad, but I do have a couple of items, the first of which is the Revenue Collector Suspense List. Revenue Collector Anna Legassi has submitted the suspense list to the town council for taxes she believes are considered uncollectible. These taxes include motor vehicle, personal property, real estate, and those owed by deceased persons. The recommended suspense list totals $193,589.24. Of that, motor vehicles total $50,884. Personal property totals $68,783. Real estate totals $52,770. And taxes owed by deceased persons total $21,151. Those that are put on the suspense list will be turned over to a collection agency for further attempts to collect taxes owed, and they generally can continue to collect taxes even though they're on the suspense list. Some of those on the proposed suspense lists have already been turned over to the town attorney. The deceased file will not be turned over for collection. There is an item on the new business regarding the proposed suspense list. Next item I have is the fiscal year 21 discussion regarding transfers and additional appropriations. There is an item on the new business that would set a public hearing for the fiscal year 21 transfers and additional appropriations as required by town charter for our next meeting, council's next meeting on June 21, 2021, at 7:00 PM. The list of proposed transfers and additional appropriations will be finalized next week and posted on the town webpage. In speaking with the finance director earlier today, the additional appropriation he anticipates will be for, not surprisingly, police overtime. He expects that it'll be somewhere around $120,000 above what was budgeted. He'll probably ask for a little bit more than that, maybe $130, $135, just to be on the safe side, because we won't have all the numbers in until the end of June. But any monies that are additional appropriations that aren't spent will go back into the general fund. Anyhow, he believes that all the other overages in the other departments will be covered by underages in other departments, so that may be the only, probably the only additional appropriation, and that is less than what we've had in previous years with regards to, to police overtime, so I think that's relatively positive. We prefer not to have any proposed additional appropriations for, for police overtime, but that's not going to happen this year. Next item I have is the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail Phase One Public Information Virtual Meeting, which is scheduled for June 22. A virtual public information meeting on Phase One of the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail through Plainville will happen on Tuesday, June 22, at 7:00 PM. The meeting will start with a formal presentation of the proposed trail, which will go from Norton Park to Town Line Road. A questions and answers session will immediately follow the presentation. Instructions on how to access that meeting and how to provide comments can be found on the town webpage at www.planevillect.com. The meeting will also be livestreamed via Microsoft Teams Live Event and YouTube Live. Interested residents are encouraged to participate in this virtual public information meeting. Phase One is scheduled to be constructed in the summer of 2023, so it's still two years off. Funding for the construction of the trail will come from a state grant. Next item I have is the American Rescue Plan Act. On June 2, the Office of Policy and Management notified Plainville regarding the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. Plainville is considered a, what they call a non-entitlement town, and as such, monies received will be a pass-through from the state. The funding will be distributed in what they call two tranches, 50% now and 50% next year. The first deposit will be made within 30 days of when the state receives payment from the U.S. Department of Treasury, and I understand that either happened today or very shortly, so we're expecting to get that in about 30 days. According to information provided, Plainville will receive a total of $5,189,197.56 from the rescue plan. Half of this amount, or $2,594,598.78, is expected to be received during the summer, and probably within 30 days or so. There are specific uses where this money can be spent. Some of that was discussed at previous council meetings. And while the treasury has issued some preliminary guidelines, town staff has not yet prepared to make a recommendation to the town council on where these monies will be best allocated. There is years before it needs to be allocated or decided upon, and then a couple of years after that where it needs to be spent, so there's timelines that go out fairly far. And when I say we're, you know, it's with regards to recommendations, for example, one of the areas where monies could be used for is what was broadly called broadband infrastructure. However, in listening to some of the guidelines last week, they suggest that this can only be done in those areas that do not have broadband available, which Plainville does, or a community that is underserved by broadband, which Plainville is not. So, you know, where we read it originally and felt that maybe it could be used to help with our fiber project, you know, at least some of the information we had received last week suggests that that may not be eligible. But those are some of the dilemmas that we have, is trying to figure out, you know, what it can be used for, and more importantly, what it can't be used for, because they'll come after you if you don't do it right, so we'll be careful as far as that's concerned. It is anticipated that more specific details will be forthcoming over the next several months, which will allow for town staff to bring forth some recommendations on how to best utilize these funds while staying within the confines of the requirements.
So a quick question. The guidelines and such are coming from the federal government?
Yes.
Those are federal dollars that are coming back to the taxpayers who have already paid into the system?
Yes.
Does that not make a little bit of nonsense? Because we certainly, just as an aside, the town of Plainville certainly knows where we could put those dollars to best use, and this is exclusive of any dollars that are going to the Board of Education, correct? Aren't they receiving substantially more?
Yeah.
So it would seem to me that the local finance boards and folks that make these decisions would certainly be best suited to decide what would most benefit our community.
Well, the guidelines promulgated by the treasury talks about there's going to be great flexibility on how the money's spent, but then the devil's in the details, and as we read those details, it gets narrowed down a little bit. So we just have to work our way through it. Hopefully, we can make something productive out of it. I feel relatively confident that some of the sewer infrastructure projects that we have in front of us will be eligible for reimbursement, you know, for example, the mountainside pump station upgrade, which was done this spring, and we've been talking about the Shuttle Meadow pump station replacement project, which, which is another area that, that I think will be eligible. I want to ferret out, when they talk about economic, economic development possibilities, you know, how that might be able to work its way into the equation, perhaps, with the White Oak Project, you know, possibly, or other areas where, where, you know, some, you know, we can assist in some of the infrastructure that would be involved with that, but we'll see.
Right. Well, so we, we still haven't gotten, they'll be coming in shortly, the funding, it says.
Yeah, the money should be here within 30 days, and Rob Buden was on a call this morning, and I believe that he received information that they were, the state would be getting those dollars within the next day or two. So that starts the 30-day clock for when they have, when they're required to deposit it with the town.
And do we have to keep this in a separate fund, just for tracking purposes and reporting and all of that? That won't go into our general fund?
No.
It'll go someplace else that we have to watch?
Yeah, we want to, we don't want to inflate our revenues on something that we may not be able to utilize, so.
Okay, well, let's, let's hope for the best.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
The next item I have is our summer meeting schedule. The town council has traditionally held only one meeting during the months of July, August, and September. Town staff is recommending that the town council consider holding their summer meetings on July 19, August 16, and September 12. Please note that the September meeting would be held on the second Monday of the month, rather than the first or the third. Part of that is because that September 12 meeting would be three weeks after the August meeting and three weeks before the October meeting, so it's, it falls right in the middle. Obviously, if there's a need for any special meetings in between, those can be, you know, called if necessary. There is an item on the new business regarding this recommendation. Certainly, the council can change those, those dates if you, if they don't work out, if you're not happy with the recommendations.
Okay.
Our next item I have is the Girl Scout Troop Bronze Award. I'll wait till they get here, and then maybe I can at least introduce that, if that's okay. Next item I have is the Anti-Racism Task Force June 29 Event at Norton Park. The Speaker's Series Subcommittee of the Task Force is planning an exciting event on June 29 in Norton Park at 6:30 PM. This event will be the first in their series, which they are tentatively calling Plainville Talks. The program will feature a musical performance by the Queen Anne Nzinga Daughters, followed by a presentation and talk by Task Force member Dana Snell. This program is being cosponsored by the Plainville Anti-Racism Task Force, the Plainville Public Library, the Plainville Youth Services, and the Plainville Recreation Department. The Task Force is requesting that both the town council and Board of Education become sponsors as well. The event will be held in the Band Show Pavilion at Norton Park. It will be done in what they call a summer concert style, and attendees are encouraged to bring your own chair and snacks. Task Force is also looking into getting a food truck to make it a more festive atmosphere. All are welcome to attend the June 29 Anti-Racism Task Force Initial Plainville Talks Event at Norton Park beginning at 6:30 PM. And just wanted to see if the council wouldn't have any issue with, you know, being named as a sponsor, there's no cost involved with it, but they'd like to attach the council's, you know, name onto, you know, one of the, you know, being a sponsor of the event, so doesn't necessarily involve a formal vote, but I, you know, some type of consensus will be fine.
Everybody okay with this?
Yes.
Yep.
I am.
Yes.
Everybody good with that? Okay. Could we provide some water or something? I don't know if, maybe the town council is part of our, we could just have water there.
Okay.
For the folks that might need some of that.
Sure.
Okay.
Let them know. We'll make sure it's cold as well, because.
That would be good.
It might be a warm night.
Cold water. Always more welcome when it's cold.
All right. We do have the concession stand there, so we do have the ability, you know.
Yeah, there it is. Okay.
All right. Next item I have is the COVID-19 update. The latest information from the State Department of Health indicates that Plainville now has less than five cases per 100,000 population for COVID-19, which puts us on the good list. There's, you know, no color associated with that, below that threshold, either yellow or orange or red. Hartford Healthcare, in conjunction with the Plainville-Suddington Health District, will be conducting a walk-in vaccination clinic this Thursday, June 10, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM in the Recreation Department located at 50 Whiting Street. The free clinic will be for anyone 12 and over. Both the Pfizer and Johnson and Johnson vaccines will be available. Minors must have a parent or guardian present to sign consent at the clinic. Participants 18 and older can choose between the Pfizer and J&amp;J vaccine. Those who receive the Pfizer vaccine will automatically be scheduled for dose two at the same appointment time and same location on Thursday, June 1. The Norton Park Pool is scheduled to open this Saturday, June 12. On May 19, the State Health Department updated their pool operations guidelines, and I remember when the council spoke about the guidelines at the earlier May meeting, a question was asked, do you think they'll provide updated guidelines? And at that point, it was just speculative, but in fact, they did. As a result, the Norton Park Pool will operate as follows this summer, and I know we provided a preview of that to the council. Pool will be open from noon to 7:00 PM each day with no time restriction. Season passes will be sold at $25 per person, which is the same as the previous couple of years, with no cap on the number to be sold. Passes can be acquired online or in person at the Recreation and Parks office. Daily passes will be available for $5. For the month of June, 100 persons will be allowed into the facility at one time. If there are no COVID-19 cases linked to the pool in June, the pool will open to maximum capacity starting July 1. Non-residents will be limited to two per household, at least until July 1, and after that, it'll be like it has been in previous years. More information about the Elizabeth Berner Pool operation, including swim lesson information, can be found on the town website, which can again be found at www.planevillect.com. Visitors to the municipal center and other town buildings are not required to wear face masks. They have been fully vaccinated. Next item I have is the Planning Grant for Connecticut Municipalities. The Connecticut Department of Housing just announced that they are inviting grant applications from small municipalities seeking to prepare and adopt an affordable housing plan under provisions of the, of 8-30 of the Connecticut General Statutes. The grant opportunity is intended to enable eligible municipalities, of which Plainville is one, to undertake a proactive planning process and lay out a strategy for meeting the housing needs of existing and future residents and workers. The grant amounts are limited to $15,000. It is expected that in the not-too-distant future, that the state legislature will require towns to have an affordable housing plan, and this is an opportunity to have it done at no cost for Plainville. To apply for the grant, a resolution must be approved by the town council, and there is an item which was added, thank you, to the new business portion, which would authorize the town manager to apply for the state grant to assist in the development of an affordable housing plan for Plainville. We'll go back on our, my report to item number six, which is Girl Scout Troop 66006 Bronze Award. What's that? Okay, we can go on. Okay, well, let's wait a moment. We'll go to happenings with, with Matt, and then you just give us the high sign when you're ready. How's that? Okay.
Good evening. Through you, Town Manager Lee and Council Chairperson. We have a number of exciting happenings to report this evening. Dog licensing was mailed in May. It is due in the month of June, so this is that reminder to register your dogs. Residents can renew their pets license online at the town's website, planevillect.com, by mail or in person. If anyone has any questions, they can contact the town clerk's office at 860-793-0221 and its extension 7151. Reminder from the tax office, they're preparing bills to go out at the end of the month for the July 1 tax notification, or tax period, 30 days to pay without interest. We'll have further at the next meeting, but that's just the early warning for that. The Senior Center also has a number of happenings. They have a new memory café at the Senior Center that's available Thursday, June 17, at 3:00 PM. Memory cafes are a safe and supportive social gathering for people with changes in their memory, along with their memory care partners. Join us to relax, socialize with other people, and experience some life-changing events. Call the Senior Center by June 17 to register, or you can register online through their Schedule Plus program. The United Way Award Celebration that we referenced earlier for their recognition of the Plainville Senior Center as a changemaker will occur on June 29 at 2:00 PM. It will be showcasing virtual award ceremony at the Senior Center live as well, with vocalist Sheri Zaccardi and a special surprise. Again, call the Senior Center to register for this free, free program. Pardon me, a little bit of difficulty with word finding this evening. Book Buds in Person will occur Friday, June 25 at 10:00 AM. That will be in person at the Senior Center. In this month, it's Lost Roses by Martha Hall Kelly. Book is available at the library, and again, you can call the Senior Center or register online through the Schedule Plus program. They also have their ongoing in-person events, and more information will be available on the town website. That's all I have this evening.
So just a question about the Senior Center. Are all their programming back up to 100% of what they were prior to COVID, or are they still easing into some of these classes and things that they used to do?
They're still easing in.
Okay.
Especially as, with regards to the meals program as well. So I expect that we'll probably be up to full operation around July 1.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Just a little bit longer, but they are ramping up, though.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Robert's presentation or for the information Matt gave us tonight? All set? Everybody all set? Okay, so we'll go into our, our special guests.
We all set? Do you want to wait a little bit longer?
Is everybody here?
We can wait longer.
No, we can get started, and if they come at the end, and they, or they just.
We can, you know, actually, we can wait a few minutes. We have another segment that we usually do at this point, which is public comments. We'll go through that part, and then perhaps at the end of that, your full contingent will be here. Okay, why don't we do that, Robert? We'll do public comments, and then we'll go on to the, the Girl Scouts. Okay, so we are into our public comment section of our meeting. During this time, we welcome the public to come to our podium. Please state your name and address. You will be given three minutes to speak to the council. Does anybody wish to speak to the council tonight? Joanne.
Joanne Edman, 166 West Main Street. Of course, it's no secret why I'm here. I'm still picking away, squawking about that trail. Alignment C is unacceptable. It is intrusive and invasive to Perron Road, Pierce Street, and Broad Street. I can't believe those people haven't come out. They're going to lose their curbside parking. Their telephone poles will probably be in their living room. And, and the park, I understand you're already cutting trees. What a shame. We have so few trees as it is. And, and it's not going to be a 10-foot swath through whatever wooded area. It's going to be about 40 feet, because they're going to need five, and five, and five, and five. I mean, it's, it's going to add up. So, and Norton must be rolling over in his grave at the park with what's going on there. I haven't seen it yet. It's going to turn my stomach, I'll tell you. So I think that it's, it's unfortunate. Alignment C is unacceptable. Your meeting on the 22nd should be in a live auditorium, I mean, live in an auditorium and not on Zoom. People are probably going to get shut out. It's, well, at least I have a chance to say something here tonight, and I will continue to speak against the trail, because it is unacceptable. It's going to cost the taxpayers of this town a lot of money, and it is going to be nothing but trouble. As I say, said before, if you want a trail, put it down Route 10. You've got sidewalks there that can be fixed and expanded and so on, but I don't know how you're going to handle it with all those trucks over there on Northwest Drive that are going to be rolling into this town, beating up our roads. 150 trucks a day, if it's 150 trucks a day, it's going to be 200. If it's 150 trucks a day, it's going to be 250 or 350, I'm sure of it. That's a big facility. So, and yes, there is a crisis at the border. It's not only a crisis, it's chaos, and it's a catastrophe. And those left-wing lunatics in Washington should be ashamed of themselves.
Okay. Be nice to the Girl Scouts, Joanne. Joanne. Does anybody else wish to speak that hasn't had a chance? Yes, sir, up to the microphone, name and address.
Hi, my name is Zach Ferguson of 40 Atherton Terrace. And I have a statement in question tonight regarding the Kyle Fasold case. So if the Girl Scouts would like to exit before we have this conversation, they may, and I can have them come back in. But I do strongly recommend that parents stay in because there's information that you do need to hear on this.
I'll leave that up to the leaders if you'd like to come back.
No rush.
Okay.
Okay, so as a parent raising my family here in Plainville, I am appalled at what I have read on the CT judicial website. There are multiple lawsuits filed against the town of Plainville involving our youth swimmers being victims of the Kyle Fasold Plainville Blue Devils, uh, Plainville Blue Dolphins child pornography investigation. Not only is it awful that these victims and their families, for the victims and their families who deal with the trauma of this situation, but then to learn that the town had knowledge is unacceptable. According to the lawsuits filed, town employees did not correctly do their job in protecting the children while at the pool. Employees are listed as having knowledge of choosing and choosing not to do anything about it. My question to the town of Plainville is, how do you manage, how did this manage to continue on? How has the town not owned up to the morality of the situation and taken accountability for their actions? To further delay these lawsuits and drag them out is to continue to make these victims' families suffer. I was further shocked to read on that not only did the town of Plainville fail to take responsibility for the tragic errors, but rather add insult to injury. The town's response around this was to file an abortionment lawsuit against the Parents' Association of the Plainville Blue Dolphins. They are suing the nonprofit Volunteer Association for their wrongdoings. The Volunteer Association was in charge of raising funds by volunteering to provide funds to give back to the children. Four children missed out and did not receive college scholarships this year because of this. Every swimmer on the team's parents are members of this association, so essentially the town is choosing to respond by suing the victims' families. The bylaws clearly state that who is a member of this Parents' Association and haven't these families suffered enough? And how does the town plan to rectify this situation? Now, I have copies of my statement. If any of you would like a copy of it, I'd be more than happy to hand them out.
Be helpful, thank you.
Of course.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Mr. Frangos?
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbanks Street. A couple of quick ones. I saw on the internet, the town news, the regular Capitol Project Building Committee meetings have been canceled. Is that terminating the group? Is just a temporary type thing? And what came out of this was, the warehouse that's being built, is this group part involved working with them? Who works with them within the town? Does that make sense, the question I'm asking?
No different than any other construction project. That's privately done, so, you know, it's being inspired by the leadership.
And then they interface, we have a special group that interfaces with the construction.
Staff, town staff.
Perfect, thank you. Okay. Another quick one, the Heritage Trail Meeting, June 22nd, time seven o'clock. Where will it be held?
Online.
I'm sorry.
Online, it's a virtual meeting.
Oh, it's a virtual, okay, thank you. I'd like to say, mention something about the works being done now on Fairbanks Street. I know they're repaving Fairbanks and Bohemia, they just finished Bohemia. That was, that crew that came in to do that job was excellent. And I really want to emphasize that. They were like ants. I mean, they just knew exactly what they had to do. It made you look at them and say, they don't need a boss. They just went about the business, and I just want to compliment them on the work they did. What else? Great work, did you play? Oh, and, no. The last thing is something general, I was just sitting in the back of the room. I say this with respect. I'm looking in the way we have our flag displayed. What it looks like is I look over into these corners, this is where we put stuff we don't know where to put it. I think there's a better way that we can find, and I'm not an interior decorator, but there's a better way we can display that flag. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else wish to speak to the council? Okay, hearing none, I will close citizens' public comment section of the meeting, and I'm going to go backwards a little bit. And we are, council is very honored tonight to have some Girl Scouts here with us this evening. And we have a few little items for your groups. So what I'm going to do is come down to this podium and read a little bit of information so that the folks on TV know what you girls and what the leaders have done. And I'm going to also ask Councilwoman Maranti and Vice Chairperson Tompkins to join me. They're going to be handing out a few little mementos to the girls that have achieved this accomplishment. So if you would like to join me down there, by the way, they're both former Girl Scouts, as am I, a little while ago, needless to say. And, but they certainly do remember their times in the Girl Scouts and some of the activities that they participated in. And when I think about my activities, it's far different than I'm sure the girls are engaging in today. But nonetheless, I was, we were involved in cooking, sewing, some crafts, but I know the Girl Scouts today are involved in technology and all kinds of very exciting, exciting things. So I'm very happy about that. So if you will join me down at the front, and I'm going to come to the podium, and I have an acknowledgement to read for the girls.
Do they want to be on TV? I'd have them like stand kind of behind, yeah, like, they would like to see themselves on TV.
You can stand right in front of me. How's that?
Girl Scouts are here, Joanne.
Well, the Girl Scouts.
Yeah, these Girl Scouts did special things, and we're going to, I'm going to, I'm going to tell you all about it, Joanne. All right, so when junior Girl Scouts team up to make a difference in their community, they learn important leadership skills, develop new passions, and watch how seemingly small actions make a big difference. It adds up to the Girl Scout Bronze Award, the highest honor a junior Girl Scout can achieve. Plainville Troop 66006 is made up of fifth graders from Tofflon and Wheeler Elementary Schools. They teamed up and worked 20 hours planning a town-wide spring fling event where the Easter Bunny visited four locations in town on a fire truck. It was well-attended and had great reviews. The girls also completed the Amuse Journey and made birthday boxes for the elementary schools for their Take Action Project. Junior Girl Scouts are required to complete a journey in a Bronze Award project to earn their Bronze Award. Great job, girls. I'm very happy for you. This, of course, does not happen in a vacuum. I'm sure there were moms and dads and leaders that were all part of this process that guided the girls and are part of this journey with them. So I would like to recognize troop leaders Melissa Thorpe and Jennifer Cole. Raise your hand so we know who you are. There you go. Thank you so much for giving of your time and talent and energy to help the girls achieve all of these accomplishments that we just talked about a little while ago. So what I'm going to do now is read the names of the scouts, and if you would come when I read your name. And we have, as I said, Councilwoman Maranti and Vice Chair Tompkins, so you have a little memento for you to take back with you. And thank you again so very much for coming tonight. The council loves to have these kinds of presentations. We see all kinds of different things that come to our attention during the town council, and things that affect and that are celebrated by our children and our scouts and the schools are very meaningful to the town council, and we certainly appreciate you coming here tonight. So with that, I'll call your name, and if you do, just come up, and we have a little something for you. The first name is Alyssa Benoit, Benoit? Did I say it correctly? Alyssa? Oh, Asia, I'm sorry. I've already got it wrong. Thank you. Madison Bone. Arden Campbell. Sophia Cole. Emily Corovo. And I'm probably not going to get this one right either. It's Ryan Dufresne. How do we say that? Ryan? Ryan? Ryan, okay. Thank you. Claire Gould. Okay, and so you'll make sure she gets her little takeaway. Madison Lunta. Eliana Rexinger McConnell. Okay. Gianna Sylvester? Not here, okay. And Courtney Thorpe. All right. Wonderful. So I trust that you'll take care of some of these little items for your scouts that didn't make it. Would you like to say something to the girls? I know that you've been involved in getting them through these projects. Would you like to say a few words?
Well, good job, girl. I'm really proud of you. We don't have to do it, they've worked through, um, Thaisies and Brownies and Juniors with us, and some of them will continue to do that next year, so you might be a factor in a few years.
Okay. That's great. I just wanted to say that I know there's a variety of programs that the girls can participate in to get badges and recognitions. And one of the things years ago that we did is a couple of council members did a government session with a group of girls. And what that did was every few weeks, we'd have the girls either come to the town council and just explain to the girls what government is about. For example, we would take them on a little tour of the firehouse, or we'd go over to the police station. We could go to the recreation department. You could come to a town council meeting, which you've already participated in. And this gives you an idea about how government works, how things happen, how do the schools get all the things that they need? It's part of the town council and the Board of Education. And these people up here tonight, they're elected people and they're volunteers, and some of them have been doing this job for a very, very long time. But many of them are from Plainville originally. They went through school, all through school, and they're still here as members of the community, and now they're part of the government. So if it's something that you think you might want to do, just so that you could learn about, how does the town work? What does government do? What does it mean to be on a town council or a Board of Education? It might be a little something you could do, and if you wanted to get in contact with the town manager, Mr. Lee? We could certainly, we could set something up where we could give you a little tour of different town facilities. You'd be surprised how many things that are taken care of by the town, that we just sort of, you know, go about our business, the library, the parks, everything that is involved with the schools and the running of the town. And it's kind of interesting to get an up-close look and talk to some of the people that do these things. So if that's something your group would like to do, we'd be very happy to help you with that.
Yeah, we'd like to thank Mr. Lee because he was a big advocate for us to get our run forward, to get it up and running in the final moments.
Great. All right. Thanks, Mr. Lee.
A couple of times, so he met with them virtually too, so very, thank you. Really appreciate this all, Plainville, and all the help that you guys give the Girl Scouts, and it's very, we feel very supported. I think you.
Great. All right, well, again, thank you, girls, for coming this evening. I know you have a lot of, it's the end of school, there's lots of activities going on, moms and dads are always going 10 different places at once. So we are, we are very happy that you came here and that we could recognize your efforts and congratulate you on receiving that honor and just a little takeaway from us. So thank you very much again, and please do come back anytime. All right. We have to turn that off. Okay. Public comments, old business. We do not have any items under old business to take action on, so we're moving on to our new business items. We have a couple of items we need to take care of, so may I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to establish a public hearing on Monday, June 21st, 2021, at 7:00 PM at the municipal center to hear public comment on an ordinance entitled, Ordinance Establishing Fourth Quarter Transfers to Fiscal Year Ending June 20th, 2021, or 30th, I'm sorry, June 30th, 2021.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to establish a public hearing on Monday, June 21st, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the municipal center to hear public comment on additional appropriations for the fiscal year 2021 budget.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item number three.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the Revenues Collector's Suspense List.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to adopt a resolution regarding the Affordable Housing Plan Technical Assistance Grant Round Two.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Last one, yep.
Motion to approve the tax refunds is listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and I believe that's all. There's nothing else that we have to take care of. Okay.
Never mind.
Got them all.
Well, just move into executive.
I'm sorry? Oh, yeah, I didn't get there yet.
Yeah, okay. Okay, good, thank you.
Mr. Lee, do we have any other items for discussion this evening?
Just one item during public comments, there was a comment made with regards to trees being cut down in the park. There were several trees that were cut down that were not part of the trail program. These were trees that were dead that were taken down by the, you know, under the buildings and grounds operation. They weren't taken down because of the, any, any construction or plans with regards to the trail. And that would be within the park itself, so just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else anybody would like to bring up? Okay, we have two items for executive session. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to move into executive session for various items. I don't, for a personnel matter and a land acquisition matter.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? I don't think we'll be taking any action that we would have to come out into session, do you believe? Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much, everybody. Okay, thank you very much, everybody.